All to order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Monday, December the 16th. You would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll lead in prayer this evening to Mr. Joe Marcello of Victory Baptist Church and the director of the Great News Interface.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
What an awesome privilege it is to be here with you guys today. So appreciate the city of Greenwood having lived here for some 26 years and what you guys have done. Very, very thankful for that and for a person like him, I've known him for 33 years, great man, and have really enjoyed our time together. Just like to read a quick excerpt from Eric Metaxas' great work called "If You Can Keep It", and believe it or not, Ben Franklin writes of the need for implications like this. It'll take about a minute to read and then we'll go to the Lord in prayer. He was talking about all the disharmony that was going on as they framed the Constitution of the United States. Nobody was getting along very well. And he writes this, he says, "In this situation of this assembly, groping as it were in the dark to find political truth and scarce able to distinguish it when presented to us, how has it happened, sir, that we have not hitherto once thought of humbly applying to the Father of lakes to illuminate our understandings? In the beginning of the contest with Great Britain, when we were sensible of danger, we had daily prayer in this room for the divine protection. Our prayers, sir, were heard, and they were graciously answered. All of us who were engaged in the struggle must have observed frequent instances of superintending providence in our favor. To that kind providence, we owe this happy opportunity in consulting at peace on the means of establishing our future national felicity. And have we now forgotten that part of our friend? I have lived, sir, a long time, and the longer I live, the more convincing proofs I see of this truth that God governs in the affairs of men. And if a sparrow cannot fall to the ground without his notice, it is probable that an empire can rise without his aid. We have been assured, sir, in the sacred writings, that except the Lord build the house, they labor in vain that build it." 1787, Ben Franklin. Let's pray. Heavenly Father, thank you so much. And when we see that quest for wisdom, we go back to the days of Solomon, who, having become the king of Israel, came to in need. He was a callow, youthful, young monarch. He needed you, and he asked for wisdom, and we gave it to him. And you tell us this, Father, if any of you lack wisdom, let him ask of God that gives to all men legroin and doesn't hold back. But let it be asked in faith. And today, we go on behalf of our city, we pray for this great city. We're so thankful, Father, for the freedoms that we enjoy here. And for these dear servants of the city, Lord, thank you for them. We just pray for your wisdom for them as they superintend over the governance of the city. We look to you for your help, for harmony, for unity, for safety and prosperity of its citizens, Lord. And we thank you for all these things, in Jesus' name, amen.
Thank you. Baby CD? Roll call.
That's right. Campbell?
Here.
Gibson? Here. Bill?
Here.
Hopper?
Here.
Lexi?
Here.
Manship?
Yes.
Mo?
Here.
And William Stetson?
And we do have a quorum. All of you should receive copies of our minutes from our last regular meeting of December the 2nd. Motion by Mr. Moan, second. Second by Ms. Manship. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? End of the roll call of the minutes.
Ben, John, the same. Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
And Mo?
Aye.
Finisher approved on the vote of seven to zero with one abstention. At this time, I'm going to invite the mayor to the podium.
Thank you, Mr. President, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Just want to take a minute and introduce our new city engineer, John Mark St. John. Got stole her woodwork for the city of Indianapolis. Jim, we were very fortunate to find him with us. He's got quite a background in both private and public service as engineer. And I will let him have the opportunity to introduce himself, liberty. Want to welcome him aboard.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Jim James, my name's Jim Peck, obviously the New York City engineer. Most of my career, 33 years, was in the private sector development. A lot of commercial, industrial, residential, not only in Indiana, but I've registered 10 other states and I have a lot of national clients. Had an opportunity to become Montgomery County engineer about seven and a half years ago because they were bringing in big industry. Timbersilly came in, 850,000 square foot facility. I was able to help them pull all that together. And then I got nominated or actually encouraged to go to Putnam County because they had 222 bridges and 66 of them need to be replaced. 30 of them needed major rehabs, so working with the state and getting federal dollars there. But then Mayor came up with this opportunity to come here because, believe it or not, I had a county government that didn't want to spend money on infrastructure. We've heard that before. So great work here. I've done a lot of work in private development. This community was always impressed with planning staff, engineering staff, you know, across the board. So great opportunity, I'm glad to be here. You know, offered the job to me and look forward to many years working with you.
Thank you, Mr. Peck.
All right.
Appreciate you coming tonight. I had, he was at the RDC meeting and I did invite him to come tonight so all of us can meet him since we do have a lot of interaction with the city engineers. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
All right, reports. Anything from the Corporation Council? Any good controller at this time?
No, not at this time.
All right, other committee or board reports, all of you. I think I mailed you the RDC report for the left RDC meeting. If you have any questions, let me know. Any other committee or board reports? All right, this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. All right, seeing that, then ordinances and resolutions, notice of intent to consider, ordinance number 2447.
Orderment 2447, ordinance to amend the official zoning map adopted by reference of Unified Development Ordinance Number 2029. The proposed zoning will possibly end in 247 acres located at 3111 South State Road 135, sponsored by Lexus.
Motion. So, Mr. Lexus, second. Second by Ms. Gibson. Want to talk to us about this?
Paul Hupman, petition or start off. But at this time, IT, you pull up the PowerPoint and share it with the virtual participants.
Thank you, Dave.
So, Mr. President, members of town council, good evening. My name's Brian Tuohy, and my address is 50 South Brady. I represent the petitioner in this ordinance 24-47. With me this evening is Taylor Navarre from Lenar Homes of Indiana. Kevin Sumner from Wyon Engineers, and Chris Miller from Lenar Homes of Indiana. Thank you very much for carrying on the presentation this evening. This is a case where it's been before your plan commission. It's a petition to rezone about 90 acres from the CL and AG classification to the plan of development classification. So it will allow development of a mixed-use commercial development on the west side of the site next to 135, and then multi-family and single-family detached homes in sort of the center and in the east side of the site. In the neighborhood, what we call it, the development we call Center Road Park. This exhibit here shows you the site, the 90 acres. As you can see, it's south of Stones Crossing Road. It's east of 135, it's north of Smoky Road Road. And it's something to... Thank you. Thank you for it all. And it's just north of the neighborhood. The mayor referred to it as part of the pond or hole with the property. I think that's a good description for this site. It's 90 acres. And this case was heard and approved by the plan commission and town council back in 2023. And so you might wonder why is it back? And I'll give you a brief explanation for that. And that was for a plan of development. And what happened in 2023, they had a commercial, as we do now, on the west side of the site. It had about 150,000 square feet of commercial area in that exhibit. That's the area outlined in the blue hash marks. And then in the middle, it had in the kind of purple hash marks, it had a multi-family cottage, which were going to be all rental communities. There was about 325 of those residences. And then on the east end, they had 250 apartments. Well, when Lenar came into the picture, what they proposed was instead of having 325 rental cottages, they proposed to sell for sale homes and also leave the apartments to leave the commercial. So you can keep this in your head for a minute. What Lenar's plan is to change it to this. So the commercial, as you expect, would remain along 135. And then you'd go slightly east of that, multi-family, which would be three and four-story townhomes. There would be 250 units, so the same number that was approved back in 2023. And then on the east side, instead of having for rent cottages, these could be for sale homes, and there would be about 290 of those. So about 35 less homes than in the communities approved back in 2023. And the common area was increased by about 13 acres. So down at the bottom of that diagram, there's kind of a triangle laying on its side. And that acreage was added to the development to take it from 77 acres to 90 acres. So to sort of summarize what I just said, in 2023, the plan commission and the council approved rezoning to plan new development, 77 acres. And in that 77 acres, on the left-hand side of that exhibit, there was about 150,000 square feet of commercial and office and retail. There was about 250 apartments, three- to four-story buildings. And there was about 325 single-family detached and detached residences. What's before you tonight, slightly more acreage, 90 acres, so about 13 more acres. That's down in that common area at the south end that I showed you a second ago. The same amount of commercial, mixed-use, square footage, multi-family, same amount of apartments, little different location, and then a single-family for sale of detached and detached residences. But about 35 less than what was approved back in 2023. So here's the outline of that development. And so you can see over on the left side of that exhibit, there's your commercial. Then in the sort of center, there's the multi-family apartments. And then on the east side, you start off, you have front-loaded townhomes that are two-story, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths, 200 square feet to about 1800 square feet. And then as you come around to the east in the blue, you have front-loaded, single-family detached homes. Those would be two-story, three to five bedrooms, two to three baths, 1600 square feet to 2400 square feet. Then you come down to the bottom in that box, you have both rear-loaded townhomes and rear-loaded detached townhomes and rear-loaded detached two stories. They would be between 1600 and 1800 square feet, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half baths. And I'll show you in a second what those different products look like. So here's single-family homes that would be detached, and their garages would be up on the backside of those. These, as I said, would be two-story, all two-car garage, three bedrooms, two-and-a-half bedrooms, 1600 square feet to 2000 square feet. Then we expect these homes to be in the $350,000 to $375,000 range. And then you have your kind of traditional, single-family detached homes. These would be the 1600 square feet to about 2450 square feet. These might be as big as five bedrooms. They would range in price from $370,000 to over $400,000, is the expected price range. And then the next slide would show both the front-load and rear-load attached townhomes. And those homes would be 1600 square feet, 1800 square feet. And the price range would be at the $325,000 to $345,000. Lenar has something that's called EI, everything's included. So there's not, you know, picked through a lot of options. They have nine-foot ceiling, they have hard, or engineered floors, I think they call those, stainless steel carpet, wood window sills, LED lights, they're energy-efficient homes. That's in all of their different kinds of homes, whether it be detached townhomes or detached homes. Their stainless steel appliances, taller decorative cabinets, high countertops, decorative countertops, kitchen islands, chrome fixtures, all that's included. So you don't have a base price and add a lot of add-ons. It's all included with our plan. There's a separate developer will develop a multi-family and the commercial. These are some images of those three and four-story townhomes that I mentioned. So it would be next door to the commercial. So the way to think of this is you come from the west on 135, as you expect, you'll see some commercial neighborhood, retail offices, insurance agencies, lawyers, restaurants, things like that. Then you go into the multi-family, where these three and four-town homes are. And then you get to the east side of the site, all the way to east border of the property. You'd have your single-family homes for sale. These are descriptions of what the commercial imagery could look like. When you're considering zoning, pre-zoning cases, you look at some different criteria. I think there's five criteria. And the first one is, does it comply with the conference of plan? Seems to make sense. That's what was approved back in 2023. This time, the rezoning staff on the staff board agreed it did the conference of plans, thoughts about what we have on this site. The staff also found that the request complies with current conditions and character of structures and uses in each of the districts. Certainly along 135, you have some commercial. To the east, you have some essentials. Further south, you have some more commercial. There's a mix of commercial and residential uses, both multi-family and single-family along 135, chasing to it. The staff includes that the conference of plan calls for, looks for master plan communities as being a desirable type of zoning use for this area along 135. And that the staff has included that they believe that this will conserve property values, will not negatively affect property value. Certainly on this site, greatly substantially increase success value of this site once these improvements are installed. And lastly, this kind of development appears to be compatible with responsible growth and development of the site. I believe the staff asked for five conditions or commitments, which the petitioner agreed to all those. And they're outlined on this slide. The street improvements would be, I believe, collaboration now with New City Engineer. The trails would be incorporated into common areas, sidewalk connectivity, street crossings, traffic calming, things we'll work those through with the master plans in the middle. And we'll work with the staff and the engineer on traffic calming measures for public streets. And that the staff will have the opportunity to review all of our ground signs for replacement. We had a meeting with the plan commission on December 9th. I believe they voted unanimously to make favorable recommendations to the council. We greatly appreciated Kate Elson, Kevin Calais' work on this plan of development document. It's a fairly lengthy document. They provided several edits, and we were... So with that, we respectfully ask for your favorable consideration on petition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hey, you want to talk to us now?
Yes.
I think Brian did a good job of covering the overview of the differences. So I won't spend too much time up here. I do want to make some clarifications. So the original BUD that was approved by the plan commission or recommended for approval or the advisory body to become council approved, it was approved with the condition that the commitments would be recorded. Since the commitments were never recorded, this never became that original BUD. So it is a straight zoning from the commercial and agricultural zoning that is currently out there. It is not a zoning from BUD to new BUDs. It was approved for a BUD, they just never recorded the commitments. That would put that into place, I believe, once the built-for-rent portion fell through. They pumped the brakes and came back with the Lenar product that is now owner-occupied housing. So the big change is the reorganization of the uses. How do you think it makes a little bit more sense to have the commercial than the multi-family than the single-family owner-occupied? Previously, the apartments were actually the furthest thing to the east, where they also have a new subdivision going in there on Honey Creek. Honey Creek Farm, Section 22. That is another Lenar subdivision, and that is single-family owner-occupied. So that's the main change. It also accrues to acreage, as just mentioned. This is to help with some of the drainage on the site. Part of those ponds that are being placed there, they can be, I believe, dry ponds, is what they're proposing. They are tied to commitments to incorporate the trail system through them. Also, we'll be expanding that trail network in this area, which will tie nicely to the Honey Creek subdivision, which we worked with them on that one to provide full railhead. So we should be getting some nice trail connectivity between these two uses if this is approved. Thought I might mention it. Section 812.3 on page 18 of 50 does state that block signing is not permitted. About that one should say it was in the previous one, and we have made sure that that one is stated. Aside from this, I really don't have much to add. It's 35 less units, and they'll be owner-occupied instead of rental.
Are there any questions for Mr. Tuohy or Mr. Nelson?
I have a question. The site as it is right now, well, they have connectivity through the other Lenar neighborhood. But my question is, it's like, having all these people exit on the 135 would be like kind of chaos because 135 is already getting kind of crazy. Are there other exit points for this neighborhood?
So, yes, they're going to be able to go north. They'll have two entrances on 135, and then it will connect, it is...
Northeast Florida.
Stobia will connect to the Honey Creek subdivision. And that will actually be able to outlet on to Honey Creek. And also south of Honey Creek, just Stones Crossing. Now, the phasing of development might come differently, come at different times. But the goal would to have that whole street going through. And also, I will say, they will likely do this in phases, so we won't all develop at the same time.
Any other questions? Any comments or discussion on the council?
Yeah, two other commitments I remember from the first time around was a plot camera. And I don't know, I'll leave it up to the chief of the discount for police in rental portion. Right now, it's about $3,000 per camera per year. I'd still like to see both of those in there. And then Mr. Tuohy's teased us because on the very first page of the commercial, he's got a Chick-fil-A on there. If it's going to be a Chick-fil-A, then we'd be really excited to have our, what we would call our fourth Chick-fil-A. I think we kind of claim the more northern county, or if it's state, or if it's ours anyway.
We're fine with those two commitments in the rental portion.
And just so that I can clarify, the original, it's this verbatim of the last time.
Yeah, I would assume so. I think, you know, that's years ago, I don't remember exactly what I said. But I think if I can plot camera the entire cities, or at least be in the city. And then I don't think I specifically said the discount would be, I'd leave that up to the...
And I think it was a reduced rate of the rental.
And I do have some clarifying comments on that. If an officer does not want to rent there, not forcing anybody to rent, not forcing... And then I think maybe City Legal may have to work with planning to understand whether they're on duty or off duty, if they're a community police officer, if it's just a reduced rate that's not tied to something. I, just to clarity on that commitment would be helpful, whether there's a written summary or...
We can work with them. Do that with consideration of the advice from the...
And I will say with this development, they will still have the apartments. That is not changing. But the, so I'm assuming that's where the rental would be, since the built-to-rent unit is now going to be owner-occupied.
All right, so we... You made a motion, a motion to that effect. We have a second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Gibson. Any discussion on the motion to amend ordinance 2447? End of the roll call, the motion to amend ordinance 2447.
Ben, John?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
And Mo?
Aye.
Motion to amend ordinance 2447 passes in a vote of eight to zero. Any further discussion on ordinance 2447 as amended? End of the roll call, ordinance 2447.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Orderment 2447 as amended passes in a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you. IT, you can stop the scripture. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good holiday.
Thank you, Mr. Tuohy. All right, first reading, Resolution 2415.
Resolution 2415, a resolution, amazing resolution number 23-... Resolution regarding certain area of the city of Greenwood and economic rehabilitation area and qualifying certain maintenance equipment, tax of it, and study your time in place for a public hearing. Natchitoches Corporation Incorporated, Natchitoches, America, sponsor Hopper.
You have a motion for Mr. Hopper, second. Second by Mr. Moan. Any discussion? And then in roll call, Resolution 2415, first reading.
Gibson?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
It was an aye.
Aye, sorry.
Ben, John? And Campbell?
Aye.
Resolution 2415 passes, first reading eight to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2442.
Orderment 2442, ordinance provided for additional appropriations from the American Rescue Plan for coronavirus, local fiscal recovery fund, budget classification 431, $220,000, and budget classification 441, $170,000. Sponsored by Gibson.
So you have a motion, motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? End of the roll call, ordinance 2442, second reading.
Excuse me, Dylan?
Aye.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship? Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Ben, Trump?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four forty-two passes second reading at an eight to zero. Ordinance twenty-four forty-three.
Ordinance twenty-four forty-three, ordinance provided for transfer of appropriations from the general fund, one hundred and ten thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars, budget classification four three one zero 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 for professional services, sponsored by Gibson.
Do you have a motion? Which one, Ms. Gibson, second? So, second by Mr. Lexi. Any discussion? You're an end and roll call, ordinance twenty-four forty-three, second reading.
Hopper?
Aye.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Ben, Trump?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Gibson?
Aye.
And Phil?
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-four forty-three passes second reading eight zero. Ordinance twenty-four forty-four.
Ordinance twenty-four forty-four, ordinance to amend the stormwater management ordinance, sponsored by Lexi.
Motion. For Mr. Lexi, second, or Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? You're an end and roll call, ordinance twenty-four forty-four, second reading.
Lexi?
Aye.
Manship?
Aye.
Mo?
Aye.
Ben, Trump?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Aye. Phil?
Aye. And Hopper?
Ordinance twenty-four forty-four passes second reading eight zero. New business, introduction of new ordinances and resolutions, ordinance twenty-four forty-eight.
Ordinance twenty-four forty-eight, ordinance amending the Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three. He has amended chapter two, city administration, article ten, miscellaneous provisions, session two, dash point one one, Americans Disability Act, ADA, policy statement to change the ADA coordinator, sponsored by Campbell.
I'll speak to this one. Both this ordinance and the next resolution, we required to name a specific person as the ADA coordinator, not a position. So since our, it's usually the city engineer, so since the city engineer, we have a new one, Mr. Peck. This is all to name him, and so should a little more housekeeping things. And resolution twenty-four seventeen.
Resolution twenty-four seventeen, a resolution amending resolution number ninety-two dash two. A resolution joining with the mayor in establishing a city policy for compliance with the Americans Disability Act and addressing related matters. Report the current city engineer as the ADA coordinator, sponsored by Campbell.
All right. Miscellaneous business. This is the second opportunity for members of the public to address the council. This time concerning items not on tonight's agenda. So if you'd like to do so, please step to the podium, state your name and address for the record. Seeing none, miscellaneous business from the corporate, or sorry, from the council. One item, as I hope all of you got my email. We have appointments that come up every year. Normally, we do those on our first meeting in January. But due to recent changes in the bonds for the RDC, we need to make the RDC appointment in, at this meeting. And so they get the bonds ready by the first meeting in January. Our current appointees to the RDC, it's a one-year appointment, is Mr. Hopper and myself. And both of us would like to continue that, that we, you wish. So this time, I'll take nominations for appointment to the RDC.
I nominate Mr. Hopper.
Nomination, Mr. Hopper, do you have another nomination?
Go ahead.
Yeah.
And also Mr. Campbell.
All right. We have a motion and a second to nominate Mr. Hopper and myself. Any other nominations?
Congratulations.
You hear none, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, I'll close. Thank you very much. I know that when I first got on the council, I told most of you this story. I went to all the meetings, and I went to the RDC meeting and thought, wow, this is what things happen. So being a part of that is a privilege that I would take lightly. I appreciate the reappointment. I think Mr. Hopper is very impressive. All right, any things from the council? Any other miscellaneous business, Corporation Council? Controller? Mr. Mayor? Uh, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much, buddy.